Good afternoon. Welcome to our public hearing for the FY26 budget. I'm Robin Shai, the Chair of the House Appropriations Committee, and we have members of both House Appropriations and Senate Appropriation Committees here with us today. Each year, we hold two public hearings for this bill. In addition to the hearing today, there will be another public hearing next Thursday, February 20th, at 5:00 p.m. For this hearing, each person will have two minutes to speak. Scott is the person who will be running the timer. And Jim Harrison, to my left, will be raising his hand to let you know when there's 10 seconds left. You'll also see it on the screens, in case you're not sure about that. Senator Perchlik, Chair of Senate Appropriations, will call the names of who is up immediately and who is on deck. If you are testifying on Zoom today, and that's a lot of people, thanks to the weather, you'll automatically be muted. When it is your turn, Erin will promote you. That's the word. Please accept the promotion, unmute yourself, and be sure your video is on so we don't have technical delays. If this is your first public hearing, please note that our job as legislators is simply to listen to your testimony. We will not be asking questions during the hearing. And finally, if your time is up and you have more you'd like us to know, or if you're here today and didn't get a chance to testify, please feel free to submit written testimony. You can send it to the House Appropriations Committee Assistant Erin, or if you had signed up, the email link was in the confirmation email you were sent. The committee will be reading all written testimony, both committees. So thank you very much for participating, and let's begin.
Okay. First is Paul Dragon, and on deck is Kim Fitzgerald.
Well done, Kim.
Thank you. My name is Paul Dragon. I'm the Executive Director of the Champlain Valley Office of Economic Opportunity, one of the five community action agencies that comprise the statewide Vermont Community Action Partnership, or VCAP. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. VCAP is requesting $15.8 million in HOP grant funding in the FY26 budget to support a wide variety of homeless prevention services across the state, a $6 million increase over 2025. The state of Vermont, our government and our people can make the choice to shelter and support every person in our state. Investing in homelessness prevention services is one of the most affordable strategies we have to confront the current homelessness crisis. Homelessness prevention stops homelessness before it starts, helping people retain their existing housing and avoid falling into a cycle of crisis and costly crisis response. Last year, VCAP helped hundreds of Vermonters keep their housing. When people do become unhoused, prevention services rehoused them faster. Homelessness prevention forestalls the need for shelter or hotel motel stays, reduces their duration when needed, and reduces reliance on costly emergency services. Our request includes $2.4 million for the statewide home family voucher program, a rapid rehousing initiative that helps vulnerable families with young children secure and retain permanent housing, and $1.2 million plus for case management positions statewide that ensure that people in need get access to the exact services they need. Without legislative action, both programs will end on June 30th. Both requests are included in a list compiled by the Housing and Homeless Alliance of Vermont, a list which VCAP supports in full. Again, our request is for $15.8 million in HOP grant funding for the Vermont Community Action Partnership for statewide homelessness prevention services. For six decades, community action partnership programs have led the way in helping Vermont move out of poverty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care. Thank you. Okay.
Kim Fitzgerald with next, and then on deck is Mary Hayden.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Fitzgerald, and I'm the CEO for Cathedral Square. We own, manage, and develop affordable housing with services in Chittenden, Franklin, and Grand Isle Counties. We serve over 1,300 people, from infants to sedentarians. Although most of our residents are 55 and older, we serve those with disabilities of all ages, young families continuing their education, and over 200 people who were formerly homeless. We have residents who work full-time, care for their grandchildren, and our active community volunteers to more frail and vulnerable residents in our two assisted living communities. We cannot thank you enough for your generous support of permanently affordable housing in the past and the $8.6 million bump to VHCB funding for this current fiscal year in the Budget Adjustment Act. As you well know, the need for housing, especially affordable housing, is great. It has taken us 47 years to build 1,100 homes or apartments, and we could build that tomorrow and not meet the need on our waitlist today. It can take three to five years to get into a Cathedral Square community. A property we are building in St. Albans now, called Reed Commons, will have 33 apartments, and we haven't even opened our waitlist for it yet. And we already have over 180 people waiting to get in, and that number will just continue to grow before we open later this year. When we open new age-specific housing like Reed Commons, it's a win-win situation. The residents are thrilled to move into a community designed for their needs that offers services and supports, maintenance, and all utilities included in the rent. In many cases, it frees up their single-family home where they raise their children, some with two, three, four, even five bedrooms that can now be sold to families. The housing is built, ready to go, no waiting. In closing, please support the governor's recommended full base funding for VHCB, and please understand we need $40 million more for VHCB to help solve the housing crisis. We've been at this for almost 50 years, and like all the other nonprofit housers, we transform lives and create communities for the long term. Do not let up on this critical funding now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Mary Hayden, and on deck is Chelsea Levis.
Is she okay? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon. Mary Hayden, from the Vermont Association of Area Agencies on Aging. We're here again this year to ask for funding for Meals on Wheels. We hit the legislature for providing $1 million in funding two years ago for the first time. And last year, by adding Meals on Wheels to the Global Commitment on Health and the Medicaid funding, that total amount is up to $2.3 million. We're seeking an additional $2 million this year, and including, if appropriate, we would support the legislature reaching the total of $4.3 million by increasing the Meals on Wheels Global Commitment to Health Demonstration Waiver amount for Meals on Wheels. We also, along the lines of nutrition, also support the Vermont Food Bank's request for an additional $5 million total in next year's budget. There's a small state-funded grant to support caregivers for those with dementia. It's called the Dementia Respite Grant, and it is only funded at the level of $250,000 right now. And we are seeking an additional $750,000 to increase the number of unpaid caregivers that we can support. These small grants fund at-home respite care and things like Adult Day and other supports to allow caregivers to be able to stay healthy and to be able to maintain their caregiving role. And we are also here as a member of the Long-Term Care Crisis Coalition. The Long-Term Care Crisis Coalition is here to request the full implementation of the increases for home-based choices for care services and enhanced residential care that were described in the February 15th, 2023 Diva Rate Study. The total general fund investment would be $6 million for that. And in my written testimony, which I'll submit later, it will include the site for that, and another 4% for a long-term care inflation adjustment. Thank you very much.
So next is Chelsea Levis, and on deck is Bria Vietz. I will obviously be pronouncing names more later throughout this.
Okay. Go ahead, Chelsea.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Chelsea Levis, and I am the Executive Director of Empty Arms Vermont, a nonprofit organization that provides peer support for families grieving pregnancy and infant loss. I am here today to ask you to support our FY26 budget request of $40,000 in one-time funds. I am testifying today about the need for pregnancy and infant loss support because this was largely non-existent when my son died 11 years ago in labor. No parent should have to grieve in isolation. We envision a world that we can do better by recognizing the need for bereavement support as part of how we help parents. We know that 20% to 25% of pregnancies end in a loss, yet there are no statewide-funded supportive programs for parentnatal loss support in Vermont. Empty Arms significantly helps fill this gap of support in our system of care for families. The latest annual maternal mortality review panel report to the legislature submitted by the Vermont Department of Health recognized the shortfall and specifically recommends that the state should invest in organizations specializing in bereavement support, peer support, such as Empty Arms Vermont. We are asking legislators to consider the review panel's recommendation and provide needed funds to allow our organization to scale up capacity and build financial self-deficiency. Mothers who experience loss in a pregnancy are four times more likely to have major depression and seven times more likely to scream positive for PTSD. We know these individuals are at greater risk for substance use suicidality and job instability. Peer support is a preventative help that gives families support before the cost of higher crisis intervention. The modest funding we request will strengthen and expand sustainability for Empty Arms, allowing us to help families in need. I ask you to support our $40,000 one-time funding request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Marie Fritz, and next on deck is Sarah Robinson.
Hello. Thank you for having me today. My name is Marie Fritz, and I am the Development and Outreach Coordinator for the nonprofit Empty Arms Vermont. We address the unrecognized native individuals and families experiencing infant and pregnancy loss, which is a gap in Vermont's mental health care system. I'm writing in support of a modest $40,000 one-time funding request which will strengthen and expand sustainability for Empty Arms Vermont and ensure consistency of programming for our participants. In 2010, my firstborn child, Magdalena Maggie, died in the NICU when she was two days old. This devastating loss was compounded by miscarriage during a subsequent pregnancy. Blissfully ignorant to the statistics of infant and pregnancy loss in my first pregnancy, I entered my second and subsequent pregnancies wary and unhopeful. My parenting years began as gutted, anxious, and suddenly alone. While I had supportive family and friends, I did not have anybody to talk with who really understood the despair and helplessness I was feeling. This led to severe isolation during which time I spoke to few people and delayed my re-entry into the workforce. I discovered Empty Arms near the 12th anniversary of Maggie's death. The community that Empty Arms provides has filled a gap in my grief journey, and as a support group facilitator and participant, I've also been able to provide comfort to others whose experiences are more recent and raw. I believe that had an organization such as Empty Arms existed when I was going through my losses, I would have been better able to advocate for myself and perhaps experienced less anxiety during subsequent pregnancies. Knowing I was not alone with a resource to confide in, I would have also had the strength to continue my career in education sooner than I had otherwise. Empty Arms Vermont brings awareness to the prevalence of pregnancy and infant loss and is fostering a culture of change around how to best support others during times of grief. This awareness has been useful for family and friends who feel at a loss as to how to support their loved ones and also validates the experience folks have countered alone. I ask you to support this $40,000 funding request in your committee discussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Sarah Robinson, and on deck is Becca Warren.
Good afternoon. The Vermont Network is the state's leading voice on issues related to domestic and sexual violence. Our members are 15 independent nonprofit organizations that provide advocacy and support to survivors of violence. In 2024, our members answered 22,000 hotline calls from Vermonters seeking support and provided in-person advocacy to 8,422 individuals. Despite this essential work, these organizations have been flat-funded through Vermont's Domestic and Sexual Violence Special Fund for 15 years. The fund currently supports $784,000 in expenses, which are distributed among Vermont's 15 service providers using a funding formula, ensuring that all regions of Vermont receive equitable resources. The special fund has experienced a deficit each year since FY15, with the exception of one fiscal year, and the General Assembly has had to make annual one-time appropriations to make the fund whole and prevent cuts. In FY26, the fund is again facing a shortfall. Combined, the Vermont Network and our member organizations rely on $12 million in federal funds. For some member organizations, these funds represent 90% of their total budgets. Our field has been uniquely impacted by the shifting federal landscape, and other states have already experienced cuts and layoffs at rape crisis and domestic violence shelters. This uncertainty threatens the promise that we make to Vermonters that there will be access to services 24 hours a day in every community in our state. The Vermont Network has two requests for this year's budget. First, we estimate that the special fund must eventually support $5 million in expenses annually. We're seeking a blend of general fund dollars and other revenues to meet this need and ask for an initial investment of $1.2 million in base funds. Second, we request that the legislature create a contingency fund for domestic and sexual violence organizations for use if federal funds are eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Becca Warren, and on deck is Mahala Largent.
Go ahead, Becca.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Becca Warren. I'm the manager of the Vermont Food Security Roadmap Coalition, and I live in Heartland. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today and highlight budget requests that will keep us on the road to food security for all who live in Vermont. You may be aware of the Vermont Food Security Roadmap to 2035. This is a document that was requested by the legislature, supported by the Agency of Agriculture and the Department of Health, and then developed out of the experience and opinions of hundreds of Vermonters. And these Vermonters and our roadmap coalition believe that food security can and should be achieved for everyone who lives in Vermont. And the roadmap helps us see a day when hidden hunger no longer exists in our communities and our farms are thriving, and we are prepared for emergencies. We are on the road to that day, and the following budget requests from the Food Security Coalition keep us on the road. So please support the Vermont Food Bank with $5 million to ensure responsive readiness in emergencies and support food purchase and distribution. Please appropriate $20 million for the Farm Emergency Fund. Please fully fund the Land Access and Opportunity Board. Please convert $332,000 in one-time state funding for Vermont 211 into base funding. And please increase public investment in Crop Cash Plus and Farm Share to $500,000 in base funding. We appreciate your leadership, and we know that with your leadership, our collective action to be food secure will be successful. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Next is Mahala Largent, and on deck is Megan Polite.
Hi. My name is Mahala Largent. I am a mother, a resident of Vermont, and a survivor of domestic violence. I'm here to speak in support of a $1.2 million investment in Vermont's Domestic and Sexual Violence Special Fund to provide the essential services to Vermont's domestic and sexual violence organizations. In 2022, my husband made homicidal threats toward my kids and me. I told him I was taking the kids shopping and left. I went to my friend's house, and we went out for lunch. The table tent at the restaurant was honoring Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I sat there staring at it and realized for the first time it was about me. That night, I called the crisis hotline at Circle, Washington County's domestic and sexual violence organization. They listened, made sure I was safe, and helped me make a plan. An advocate helped me file for a relief from abuse order and sat with me through three court sessions. As soon as the protection order expired, he became violent again during a visit with the kids. I met with advocates at Circle and a lawyer from the Vermont Network to discuss what to do. I took my kids and what we could load into a truck in three hours and left. I had no time to prepare or save money, no home, no job. I felt completely terrified. I thought that once I got away, the crisis was over. In reality, it has taken years of support to break free from the violence and rebuild my life. Circle has been with me every step of the way. I've called Circle's crisis hotline dozens of times. I've attended Circle's support groups since 2022. I've accessed emergency housing, and once it was safe to return to Vermont, I accessed support for a deposit for permanent housing. I've even gotten food and toilet paper from Circle. I've used their holiday gift tree so my kids didn't go without holiday gifts. I can't imagine how I would have managed without the support. And every survivor and every Vermont community, now and in the future, deserves that same support. Please preserve these essential services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Megan Polite, and on deck is Jennifer Stratton.
Hello.
Hi, Meg.
Hi. Hello. Thank you. My name is Meg Polite. I'm the Policy Director for the Vermont Chapter of the Alzheimer's Association, and I'm a member of the Long-Term Care Crisis Coalition. And I'm here to ask you to invest in home- and community-based care that so many Vermonters rely on to grow old with dignity, respect, and independence. The Long-Term Care Crisis Coalition represents more than 200 providers and organizations who deliver nursing-home level of care in homes and communities. We're united as a sector responsible for caring for some of Vermont's sickest and most vulnerable. Vermonters with Alzheimer's and all other dementia represent a large portion of those who are served through this network. Almost 13,000 Vermonters over the age of 65 are diagnosed with Alzheimer's. But that number grows when you add in those who are undiagnosed, those with other forms of dementia, and those under 65. Vermont has the third-oldest population in the nation and the largest percentage of older people living in rural communities. Home and community-based services are an integral part of our health system and are much less costly than hospitalization. But without funding, they're shrinking and closing at a time when demand is growing. The Department of Health reports approximately 38% of Alzheimer's and dementia hospitalizations are preventable. Investing in home and community-based services is vital if we want to reduce unnecessary emergency room visits and our overall health care spending. I was shocked that the governor's budget proposal did not include any increases in funding for long-term care providers and communities that accept Medicaid to care for our most vulnerable Vermonters as they age. We are seeing price increases in all aspects of life, and this represents a funding cut to a key part of the system. I'm asking you to please fully implement the increases for home-based choices for care and enhanced residential care services as outlined in 2023 by the Diva Rate Study to include an inflationary adjustment of 4% to all long-term care reimbursement rates and to ensure the stability of Adult Day programs by funding their budget request. We know what we need to do. We're asking you to adequately fund us so we can do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next, I think you're in the room, Jennifer Stratton, and on deck is Elizabeth Walters.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Stratton, and I have the great privilege of being the CEO at Lemoyle County Mental Health Services. We're located in Mooresville, Vermont. We're a designated agency providing mental health and developmental services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm here to advocate for a 6.2% Medicaid rate increase for designated and specialized service agencies, which is crucial to providing vital services to vulnerable Vermonters. First, I want to thank the legislature for your ongoing support for Vermonters' health and well-being, especially your commitment to rate increases for our agencies. Your support helps ensure that critical services remain available to those who need them most. Like other designated agencies and specialized services agencies, we are facing significant staffing shortages. It's not a matter of finding qualified, passionate staff. It's that we can't offer them the same salaries that they can make otherwise. Many of our staff are leaving because they can earn more money elsewhere. Some of our clients make more money than our direct support professionals who are supporting them on job sites. Our current staff are overwhelmed, and we are often relying on outside contractors who charge much more than we can afford. This situation ultimately impacts the vulnerable Vermonters who are depending on our services. Last year, we spent $4.3 million on our health care plan at Lemoyle County Mental Health Services. But this year, we've had to make drastic cuts, leaving staff to pay significantly more for their health insurance while already being underpaid. Without rate increases, our operational costs continue to rise while our funding stays the same, leading to a reduction in resources each year. Medicaid rate increases have not kept up with the pace of the Consumer Price Index, and we are facing a growing funding shortfall.
That's right. I just cut you off here. So it's your two minutes. If you haven't already submitted your whole testimony, please submit it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next on Zoom is Elizabeth Walters, and on deck is Kate Lampert.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Walters. I'm the Executive Director at Cree Mountain Support Services, located in Lemoyle County and providing services throughout northern Vermont. I'm here to advocate for 6.2% Medicaid rate increase for designated and specialized service agencies. This increase is vital to our ability to provide the essential services that keep Vermonters safe, healthy, and living in their communities. I want to express our deep appreciation for your ongoing support of Vermonters' health and welfare. Your dedication helps ensure that the essential services we provide are available to those who need them the most. The aging parent who wants to stay at home following a dementia diagnosis, the young adult with autism who, with some supports, can go on to live an independent life, the mother of three recovering from a stroke, all of these people rely on the DA and SSA network for the support that they need. We appreciate that you recognize the critical role these agencies play. Increases in Medicaid rates have not kept pace with the rising costs, so our funding has not kept pace with cost of living or the cost of service provision. This makes it extremely difficult for us to retain, to recruit the qualified staff that Vermont families rely upon to provide care to their loved ones. I also want to stress that when people go without the services that we can provide, they're much more likely to experience preventable crises, including unnecessary emergency department visits, hospitalization, homelessness. In conclusion, I urge you to support the requested six-point-two percent increase. These funds will allow our strong network of local provider agencies to continue to meet the needs of some of Vermont's most vulnerable and will reduce the need for much more costly emergency response services. I thank you for your time and attention today.
Thank you very much.
Next on Zoom is Kate Lampert, and on deck is Lauren Glenn Davis-Davidian.
I'm here, and I'm the Chief Clinical Services Officer at HCRS, the designated agency covering Windsor and Wyndham Counties and the lead agency working with DMH and other designated agencies to operate enhanced mobile crisis across Vermont. At HCRS, we are extremely proud of the high-quality, community-based services we provide. I am here today to advocate for a six-point-two percent Medicaid rate increase for designated and specialized service agencies like ours and for improved access to safe and affordable housing. I want to thank you for your past support. It has truly made a difference. However, we need continued investment to sustain the critical services we provide to Vermonters with complex needs. The six-point-two percent increase will ensure we can recruit and retain staff, maintain service quality, and meet the increasing needs of our communities. Right now, we are facing staffing shortages and high turnover, particularly in crisis outpatient and residential programs, forcing us to rely on unsustainable overtime to keep essential services running. Without adequate funding, we're at risk of having to close programs or reducing available beds, leaving people without the care they need. This can lead to avoidable disruptions in the community, increased law enforcement interventions, and prolonged emergency department stays. At HCRS, we have seen an increase in the acuity of needs, and with high caseloads, it is difficult to provide the level of services that is necessary and resulting in far too many people on waiting lists for services. Beyond serving service capacity, the housing crisis is further destabilizing our clients. More Vermonters are experiencing homelessness with few options for safe and affordable housing. Without stable housing and the effectiveness of without stable housing, the effectiveness of our services is compromised. To support Vermonters in living safely and successfully in their communities, they need both sustainable services and safe housing. A Medicaid rate increase of six-point-two percent is essential to assuring we can continue to delivering vital mental health, substance use, and developmental services. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Lawrence Lane, and on deck is Margaret Walsh.
Good afternoon, Lauren Glenn Davidian. I'm the Public Policy Director for CCTV Center for Media and Democracy. Thank you so much for this opportunity to testify. I'm here representing Vermont Access Network, which is seeking one-point-three-five million dollars in base funding included in the Secretary of State's budget. Vermont Access Network is a nonprofit organization and network of twenty-four community media centers, excuse me, that are providing community media services, including coverage of public meetings, media literacy programs, coverage of events, and connecting community members through archives, training, and keeping the wheels of democracy turning. We were first established in nineteen eighty-four, and we provide community media services all across the state, not just within cable service territories. We employ about a hundred and fifty folks across the state. We produce collectively eighteen thousand hours of programming that serves the needs, communication and information needs of the state. And just to put a fine point on the fact that we serve beyond the cable service territories to all across the state, we had one-point-three million views on YouTube last year. So people are watching and people are utilizing our services in all corners of Vermont. We were very fortunate to receive one, one million dollars this year in the base budget. We've worked with the Secretary of State to identify a three-year funding glide path, which essentially is required because cable revenue is declining very rapidly while our services are increasing. And we determined that one-point-three-five million would be appropriate for this year. One-point-three million was included in the governor's budget, and we're hoping that you will include the one-point-three-five in your FY twenty-six budget deliberations. Thank you very much. And of course, you can rely on us to provide any more information that you need at any time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Margaret Walsh, and on deck is Elizabeth Gilman.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Margaret Walsh, and I serve as the Director of the Parent-Child Center at Northwestern Counseling and Support Services. I'm here today to advocate for the increased funding for the Parent-Child Center network and to emphasize the critical role PCC's play in supporting Vermont's children and families. First, I'd like to express my gratitude to the legislature for its ongoing commitment to parent-child centers. Positive early childhood experiences are essential to the overall health of our state, and it's evident that this legislature values and invests in the people doing this essential work. To ensure we can sustain and strengthen prevention-based supports and services, we are requesting to secure five-hundred-thousand dollars from the Tobacco Settlement Fund for the base funding of the PCC Integrated Grant to allow PCCs to consistently and comprehensively provide tobacco cessation referrals, education, and support for pregnant people and families with young children to ensure infants and young children are not exposed to secondhand smoke. Investing in smoking cessation funding for young children and families has far-reaching benefits, leading to drastically improved public health outcomes. Exposure to tobacco smoke, both direct and secondhand, has been linked to numerous health risks, including respiratory infections, asthma, and low birth weight. By providing smoking cessation resources, education, and support, we can help expectant parents and caregivers quit smoking, create healthier environments, and reduce the likelihood of chronic health conditions in children. Reducing tobacco use among parents will improve overall family well-being by decreasing hospital visits, lowering healthcare costs, and promoting longer, healthier lives. Supporting parent-child centers is an investment in Vermont's future. PCCs serve as vital primary prevention and early intervention resources, strengthening families, improving health outcomes, and ultimately reducing long-term costs across healthcare and social services. I urge you to continue prioritizing this critical work by securing five-hundred-thousand dollars from the Tobacco Settlement Fund to sustain and expand parent-child centers' essential services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next is Elizabeth Gilman, and then on deck is Eric Fritz.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Gilman, and I'm the Executive Director for the United Ways of Vermont and Vermont Two-One-One. Vermont Two-One-One is a free confidential statewide information referral system that serves all Vermonters with connection to health and human services. We support the state of Vermont in times of emergencies and disasters. We provide after-hours emergency housing to, for the Agency of Human Services. We are part of the Vermont Food Security Roadmap and support many nonprofits with their work through connection to services, our database work, and data. Vermont Two-One-One is the most efficient and effective system that Vermont has to ensure Vermonters across the state can get the information they need. A strong Two-One-One is critical at all times, but especially in times of crisis or disaster. There is one-point-three million in base funding for Vermont Two-One-One in the governor's FY twenty-six budget. We require one-point-six million to continue our current operations, including twenty-four-seven services. We request three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars in supplemental funding to bring that amount to our true operating costs. I thank you for your time and for your ongoing support of Vermont Two-One-One.
Thank you very much.
Next, Eric Fritz. On deck is Johanna Graffan Reed. It's even more embarrassing if you know the person and you don't know.
Okay, go ahead, Eric.
My name is Eric Fritz. I am the Executive Director of Scotland House Adult Day Services and the President of the Vermont Association of Adult Day Services, also known as VADS. Adult Day Centers provide a safe, supportive environment where people can come during the day and receive a range of professional health, social, and therapeutic services, as well as a nutritious meal and valuable social interaction. Adult Day Services also provide respite, support, and education to family members and caregivers. We were greatly appreciative when the legislature increased our Medicaid reimbursement rate to twenty-five dollars an hour. While this increase assisted with our ability to offer our staff higher wage, we still struggled with staff recruitment and retention in the current competitive market, not to mention the continued ever-present inflationary impact on all of our overhead costs. The majority of Adult Day participants rely on choices for care. Under Medicaid rules, a provider can only be paid when services are provided. We are not compensated when a participant does not show up and when they, when they have signed up for a time slot. This happens quite a bit as our participants are older and often sick, lack transportation, have doctor's appointments, or are simply unable to attend for a few days. The eleven VADS programs recently calculated that our total amount of money we lost due to absenteeism over six months in two thousand and twenty-four was just over eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars. Therefore, we are requesting eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars from the General Fund to be split proportionally among the eleven programs. While this will not cover all of our losses from absenteeism, it will help offset the lost revenue as we continue our efforts to maintain long-term financial sustainability. We also hope that you will support an FY twenty-six budget, the full implementation of increases for home, home-based choices for care services and enhanced residential care described in the February twenty-three Department of Vermont Health Access Rate Study. We also support the request from the Long-Term Care Crisis Coalition for the four percent increase in reimbursement rates.
Thank you, and please submit your testimony if you haven't already. Okay.
All right, Johanna Graffan Reed.
Perfect.
And on deck is Morgan Cross.
Wonderful. Good morning, everyone. Afternoon, afternoon. Let's say it's even. Okay. Dear legislators, I'm Johanna de Graffan Reed. I'm with Vermont Businesses for Social Responsibility as their Public Policy Manager. I'm proud to represent our over six hundred members, including hundreds of businesses from all economic sectors, every Vermont county, and ranging from international Vermont businesses to Vermont's smallest rural businesses. Thank you for the opportunity to offer our support for funding the Vermont Housing and Finance Agency in the fiscal twenty-six budget. We appreciate the efforts of the legislature to expand access to housing in Vermont while also maintaining our state's environmental integrity and shared commitment to creating just equitable communities. Vermont Businesses for Social Responsibility strongly supports the budget request to fully fund the Vermont Housing Finance Agency Middle Income Home Ownership Development Program and the Rental Revolving Loan Funds. Vermont Businesses for Social Responsibility is a statewide nonprofit business association with a mission to leverage the power of a business for positive social change and environmental impact. For over thirty years, our organization has promoted the opportunity and responsibility of the businesses' community to set a high standard for protecting the natural, human, and economic environments for citizens. The scarcity of adequate housing in Vermont costs both employers and employees. The struggle to find accessible and affordable housing can lead to households to seek employment elsewhere, often due to commutes or expensive markets. In response, employers must offer more competitive wages and benefits to attract and retain employees alongside increased turnover costs. For these and for many more ethical and economic reasons, we support the funding requests for the following Vermont Housing and Finance Agency programs in the fiscal twenty-year, but twenty-six budget. First, the Middle Income Home Ownership Development Program. In two thousand and twenty-three, the VHFA deployed twenty-four million dollars that funded a hundred and twenty-five homes with an average subsidy of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per home and the purchase price buyer of a hundred and ninety-five K. The Rental Revolving Loan Fund program is seeking an additional fifteen million dollars in the budget in order to create additional rental units for middle-income households, and thank you for your time. I'll submit the rest in writing.
Two minutes was really fast.
Thank you all so much for your time today, and I'll make sure to email you all when you need to.
Next is Morgan Crossman, and on deck is Jennifer Cole.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dr. Morgan Preston. I'm the Executive Director of Building Bright Futures, which is your early childhood state advisory council. In this role, we're charged under state statute as the primary advisor to the legislature, as well as the administration, on kids and families prenatal to age eight. What that means is we are a nonpartisan entity in the state. We are quasi-governmental, meaning agency leaders, legislative representatives, and community members are supporting this work on the board. We hold the vision and strategic plan for the system. We convene and elevate the voices of over five hundred partners in the community, as well as families. We monitor the system by identifying all of the needs and challenges and collecting and analyzing and compiling that data on your behalf, and then using and synthesizing that information to support me with decisions. Building Bright Futures is asking the legislature for an increased base allocation of three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. Our current state appropriation does not sufficiently support the monitoring efforts that are required to ensure that the state's investments in kids and families is having the intended impacts. The legislature, the administration, and the system require Building Bright Futures to be increasingly adaptive and responsive and build state capacity in really strategic areas. And those are measuring and monitoring and integrating data to fully get collective understanding of kids and family outcomes and thinking about service provision. We also provide direct advisement to you all using that data on early childhood services. So it may be childcare, nutrition, housing, education, mental health, special education. We also build capacity for and coordinate early childhood policy with all members of the administration who support and serve kids and families. Most importantly, we support accountability for the, for the system and for you all to say, okay, how do we make sure that we're doing what's best for kids and families? It's more important than ever to ensure that every dollar we're spending is having the intended impact, and you've entrusted us with this monitoring role for kids and families. So this increase to our base allocation will allow us to respond efficiently and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Jennifer McChelp, and then on deck is Emma Pross.
Hi, my name is Jennifer McCalkie. I live in Ludlow, and I am the responsive nurse at the Springfield Area Parent-Child Center in Springfield, Vermont. We serve twenty-three communities in our catchment area. I am here to help secure five-hundred thousand from the Tobacco Settlement Fund for the base funding of the Integrated Grant to allow parent-child centers to consistently and comprehensively provide tobacco cessation referrals and support for pregnant people and families with young children, as well as education and support to ensure infants and young children are not exposed to the secondhand smoke. As a home visiting nurse, I work diligently to enhance the health of the families that I work with. If I'm able to help pregnant women and mothers to stop smoking and draw vaping, ripple effect will be healthier for their children, therefore decrease in premature births, low birth weights. There will be less ear infections, less asthma for older children. The effects for these women will also include less heart disease, lower blood pressures, less lung cancers, and respiratory diseases for themselves, which in turn would result in healthy parents being able to care for their children. In addition, they will be modeling healthier life choices, which in turn may help their children to not smoke and draw vape when they are older themselves. I thank you for your time, and I hope my testimony helps to secure five-hundred thousand dollars from the Tobacco Settlement Fund for the base funding of the Integrated Grant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Emma Pross. And on deck is Tom Donahue.
Good afternoon. My name's Emma Paradise. I'm the Manager of Policy and Strategic Initiatives at Common Good Vermont, a statewide program of United Way of Northwest Vermont. Common Good Vermont is a trusted resource and nonpartisan advocate for the state's nonprofit organizations. We support the success of these organizations through training, education, and advocacy. More than sixty-four hundred nonprofits provide services, good jobs, and civic engagement that makes our community stronger. Nonprofits employ one in five Vermont workers and generate over ten billion in revenues per year to the economy. These nonprofits, many of whom you've heard from today, address basic human needs, as well as provide vibrancy to our communities. As of July one, two thousand and twenty-four, the state of Vermont had over six thousand active grants totaling more than two-point-seven billion. A significant portion of these funds are awarded to nonprofit corporations, delivering critical services and investments on behalf of the state. Common Good Vermont seeks two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand in state funding to fill a gap in technical assistance, workforce development, and grant and contract support for the sector that will create efficiencies for both nonprofits and the state. Through this partnership with the state of Vermont, Common Good will grow our offerings to support emerging sector needs, expand access to programming, and increase the capacity of nonprofits with straight grants and contracts. Program specifics are outlined in my written testimony. Common Good Vermont provides services for Vermont nonprofits akin to the, those provided to businesses by the SBA. Yet, we currently do not receive any public funding. Our funding request aims to address this gap at a time when nonprofits, our state, and the communities we serve are navigating the impacts and uncertainty of unprecedented, unprecedented federal funding and policy changes. We request that the appropriations committees consider a grant of two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand in FY twenty-six to support this critical work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Tom Donahue, and on deck is Delaneyan Norton.
Thank you. My name is Tom Donahue. I'm CEO of Brock Community Action, serving Rutland and Bennington Counties and a member of the statewide Vermont Community Action Partnership. BCAF is requesting fifteen-point-eight million dollars in hop grant funding in the FY twenty-six budget to support homelessness prevention services across the state. Homelessness is preventable. State of Vermont can make the choice to help people find shelter, services, and eventually security, meeting people's basic needs, having strong supports and services that are accessible to all, and nurturing connections community-wide are our strongest tools for ensuring communities are safe, healthy, and strong. BCAF's homelessness prevention teams establish ongoing personal relationships with people facing homelessness and ensure they can count on nuanced assistance customized to their specific needs and to their unique path for permanent housing and economic security. BCAF's request includes one-point-three-five million dollars in support of the recruitment, retention, and expansion of our overworked and under-resourced frontline team members. BCAF's request also includes an increase of one million dollars to support direct financial assistance for people facing homelessness. And this kind of short-term, one-time, and often very simple support helps people retain their housing and avoid falling into homelessness. Direct financial assistance can help with short-term back rent, first and last month's rent, security deposits, and a new place to live, including utility deposits, debt reduction, transportation to employment, moving costs, and other cheap interventions to help people stay housed. Investing in this kind of support is exponentially cheaper than the kinds of intervention that become necessary when people become unhoused. Again, BCAF is requesting fifteen-point-eight million dollars in hop grant funding in the FY twenty-six budget to support homelessness prevention services across the state. We also ask that you support the FY twenty-six budget requests of the Housing and Homelessness Alliance of Vermont, of which we are members. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
All right, next is Delaneyan Norton, and on deck is Nicole Sinner.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Delaina Norton, and I am the Executive Director of Champlain Community Services in Colchester, Vermont. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Champlain Community Services is a specialized service agency that supports Vermonters with developmental disabilities, autism, and older adults who wish to age in their community rather than in a nursing home setting. Before my tenure as an executive director, I spent many years working in two different designated agencies in Vermont. I am here today to advocate for the six-point-two percent Medicaid rate increase for the designated agencies and the specialized service agencies. The six-point-two percent is a thirteen-million-nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar request of the General Fund. This increase is essential to sustaining vital services for vulnerable Vermonters. Our system of care provides critical treatment and support, and we are grateful for the rate increases over the past several years. These increases have helped our workforce, recruitment, and investment in technology and innovative support models. However, despite these efforts, our workforce remains stretched thin. In the past years, we've experienced a fifty percent turnover rate among our service coordinators, and we continue to struggle to hire the necessary direct support professionals since the pandemic, just at CCS. The primary challenge is wages. We operate in a highly competitive job market in Chittenden County, and the cost of living and inflation drives potential employees to seek higher-paying jobs. A six-point-two percent Medicaid rate increase is essential to ensuring that agencies like CCS can continue to provide support to Vermonters with disabilities and remain in their communities and avoid a higher level of care. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much.
Next is Nicole Sinner, and on deck is Liz Genge. Okay, we'll skip Nicole for now. Next would be Liz Genge, and on deck is Jill Nazal.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for hearing my testimony today. My name is Liz Genge. I'm the SASH Director at Cathedral Square. Cathedral Square is a nonprofit housing developer serving older adults and individuals with diverse needs in Chittenden, Franklin, and Grand Isle Counties. We have twenty-seven communities, including two assisted-living residences. We also created support and services at home in two thousand and nine and administer the model statewide in a hundred and forty affordable housing communities. SASH embeds a full-time community health worker and a part-time wellness nurse where people live. I urge you to support the gap year funding for SASH, which is included in the governor's recommended budget. This is necessary because the all-payer model ends at the end of this year. Today, I'm here to also seek the addition of funding for the successful pilot program based on SASH, but translated to include families and their children, called SASH for All. We are currently in near three of this pilot. We are currently in near three of this pilot, Brattleboro Housing Partnerships, and Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust, impacting 250 Vermonters and their families. The key benefits of SASH4All include preventing homelessness, improving health, reducing social isolation, excuse me, and fostering positive neighborhood connections. Some outcomes include improved preventative health and 19 prevented evictions. Unfortunately, the governor's budget didn't include funding for the continuation of the pilot despite our positive outcomes. We're ready to expand the pilot to serve approximately 1,200 more people across the state in areas with the highest need in Bennington, Brattleboro, Rutland, Central Vermont, Burlington, and the Kingdom. It will cost $400,000, continue the existing pilot, and $2 million to expand around the state. Importantly, without the $400,000, the pilot will end and the participants in Brattleboro will lose their sense. Thank you. I'd say gratitude to the legislature for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next is Jill Mazel Olsen, and on deck is Mary Kate Molman.
Good afternoon. I'm Jill Mazel Olsen. I am the Executive Director of the VNA's of Vermont. I'm representing home health and hospice agencies. We have two funding requests for critical services. The first is to bring medical home health rates, our Medicaid rates, up to 90% of Medicare rates. They are currently at about 67%. This is a $1.2 million general fund asked. So these are the nurses, physical therapists, occupational therapists in the home, usually after hospitalization. Second, we're asking that you bring at-home choices for care rates up to cost, as outlined in the DVA Rate Study 2023. So this is about 2.2 million, and it's part of that larger request you've been hearing about from the Long-Term Care Crisis Coalition. So those are the services we provide, excuse me, provide for older and disabled Vermonters in their homes, things with things like bathing, dressing, meals. These services reduce healthcare, wow, I can't talk today, they reduce healthcare costs now, not in the future, right now. Nearly everyone in these services would either be stuck in a hospital bed or need a facility bed. So when we take care of them at home, we are saving the system money in the short term, immediately, right now. Home Health and Hospice has almost no private insurance. We're totally reliant on government payers. And we used to have enough Medicare funding to manage Medicaid shortfalls. We no longer do. We've had Medicare cuts. We have a lot of beneficiaries moving to Medicare Advantage. We have no negotiating leverage with those plans, and many of them pay very, very poorly. We lost an agency last year. So these are low-cost services, very high value, and we urge you to support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mary Kate Molman, and on deck is Jessica Barkless.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Vermont's federally qualified health centers and to discuss their financial hardships. My name is Mary Kate Molman. I am Director of Vermont Public Policy at Bi-State Primary Care Association. Today, we are asking for an appropriation of $5 million in state funding to bring FQHC Medicaid rates up more in line with the cost of providing care to Medicaid enrollees. FQHCs are an integral part of Vermont's healthcare system, providing primary care, mental health, substance use disorder treatment, oral health, and food access services to one in three Vermonters in every county in the state. They often bridge that last mile for those with the greatest barriers to care. However, this presence and these points of access are at risk. Due to chronically insufficient rates, every FQHC in Vermont is financially fragile. Every single one is looking at making difficult budget decisions. For example, two of our FQHCs have each had to close a site recently. And I want to reiterate, this is all Vermont FQHCs. They're all struggling financially. Some have less than 20 days' cash reserve on hand. Others are quickly drawing down their cash reserves every month and are asking how long they can keep doing it. Earlier today, I heard a couple say 20 months. Furthermore, these calculations have not factored in the loss of the Medicare Blueprint funding or the One Care Vermont All-Payer Population Health Funding. FQHCs have been very creative in figuring out how to make their thin margins work, but that capacity is coming to a limit, and they need investment in comprehensive care. Last year, the Congressional Budget Office calculated that increased spending for FQHCs led to reduced spending overall because FQHCs provide lower-cost, high-value care. If without this investment, we risk rising rates of expensive ED and inpatient stays. Thank you.
Next is Jessica Barkless, and on deck is Kurt Broderston.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Barkless. I am the Vice President of Public Affairs for Planned Parenthood of Northern New England. PPNNE proudly serves nearly 16,000 Vermonters across our seven health centers, as well as statewide through our telehealth program. Every day, people turn to us for compassionate, high-quality, and affordable reproductive and sexual health care, including wellness exams, birth control, STI treatment and testing, cancer screenings, vasectomy, abortion care, gender-affirming care, and essential primary care services. No one is turned away based on their ability to pay, and 54% of our patients have low incomes. Last year alone, we provided 1.3 million in free and discounted care to Vermont, a significant increase from 802,000 the previous year. We are requesting a modest state investment of $85,000 to be added to increase Medicaid rates for family planning codes. Medicaid provides an enhanced federal match rate of 90/10 for family planning services, meaning that the federal government would be covering 90% of this increased rate, turning this $85,000 state investment into $850,000 for Vermonters' health care. Access to family planning services strengthens entire communities. They empower individuals, support families, and create a healthier, more economically stable Vermont. We deeply appreciate the dedication of the legislature and ensuring everyone who calls Vermont home can have access to the care that they deserve. This is more than a financial investment. It's an investment in the health, dignity, and future of Vermonters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Kurt Broderston, and on deck is Sam May.
Hi, my name is Kurt Broderston. I am the Executive Director of Middlebury Community Television and am President of VAN, the Vermont Access Network. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Please support the Vermont Access Network with $1.35 million in base funding through the Secretary of State's FY26 budget. As directed by the legislature last year, VAN has worked with the Secretary of State's office to make a three-year plan for funding. Your support allows us to continue to record and maintain archives of public meetings, keeping Vermonters informed and engaged in the democratic process. This funding is particularly particularly important as the decline in cable revenue threatens our ability to provide this essential service. I ask you to please support the Vermont Access Network with $1.35 million in funding through the Secretary of State's office. Thank you for your consideration, as well as your past and ongoing support of Vermont's community media centers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for points for bringing it quick. Sam May, next, and then on deck is Mandy Fisher.
Hello, and thank you for taking the time to hear my testimony. My name is Sam May. I'm the District Manager of the Essex County Natural Resources Conservation District, and I'm here to ask you to please support a base budget of $3 million for the Natural Resources Conservation Council and the Agency of Agriculture budget. This base funding for the parent agency of 14 conservation districts across the state would be a cost-efficient way to ensure that the existing conservation programs from federal and state agencies reach the people most in need. One example of how this happens on the ground for my district is I've secured a million-dollar grant from the federal government in coordination with a $200,000 clean water grant from the state to replace a major culvert for the town of Lunenburg, one of the poorest communities in the state. So this culvert replacement would give a flood-resistant structure to this town. It restores fish passage. That's what the federal grant's all about, and it's clean water improvement. And this is just one of many examples across the state where the 14 conservation districts are doing this type of work, connecting local communities to existing programs and making sure that everyone has the access to them. So an increase in base funding would exponentially increase the impact of conservation districts in the state. So again, please support a base budget, $3 million for the Natural Resources Conservation Council, the Agency of Agriculture budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mandy Fisher, and on deck is Sebastian Lurie.
Hi, my name is Mandy Fisher, and I'm in Burlington. I'm here today as a representative of the Vermont Food Security Roadmap Coalition. In my capacity as Director of Programs at the Intervell Center, a statewide nonprofit with a mission to strengthen community food systems that sustain farms, land, and people, I was honored to work with a group of other food security leaders with input from over 600 Vermonters to craft the Vermont Food Security Roadmap to 2035, an action plan that I hope you've all seen or will see soon that shows us how to ensure everyone in Vermont has the food we need. Food security can and should be achieved for every Vermonter. This year, some of the priorities that we're highlighting from the roadmap involve state funding. These priorities work together to move us down the road to food security. None is more important than the others and are designed to support emergency food assistance and farm viability while also addressing systemic injustice. That's the magic of the roadmap. It brings together solutions that address the root causes of hunger while also investing in local agriculture and securing our food supply so that we can secure our food supply and end hunger at the same time. These priorities are to fund the Vermont Food Bank's appropriations request of $5 million, continue funding the Land Access and Opportunity Board so that they can perform their statutory powers and duties for improving land and housing access for all Vermonters, appropriate $20 million for the food security fund or the farm security fund to support emergency farm recovery from adverse weather events, convert $323,000 in one-time funding for Vermont 211 to base funding, and increase the public investment in Crop Cash Plus and Farm Share to $500,000 in base funding. Ending hunger means never again being surprised to learn that our neighbors, family members, or friends don't have the food they need. By funding these priorities, you can move us down the road to food security. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sebastian Lurie, and on deck is Rosie Gray.
Hi, my name is Sebastian Lurie. I am a student success advisor on the Castleton campus of Vermont State University. I am a proud CCB and Linden campus alumnus. I come from a low-income house and was a first-generation student. I watched all three of my sisters follow me to Linden. I saw my mother go back to school as an adult to get her associate's degree from CCB. We even took a college math course together. I married a graduate of the VSM program here at Castleton. To be able to give back to students in the same system that helped shape me and my family is a powerful opportunity that I do not take lightly. That is, in part, why I serve as co-president of my local union, the VSCUP, and as president of higher education for AFT Vermont. I am here today to encourage you to support Chancellor Mouch's funding request for the Vermont State College System in the FY26 Vermont State Budget. Access to higher education is vital to keeping Vermonters in Vermont, supporting local businesses, and building strong, vibrant communities. Funding the Vermont State College System in the FY26 Vermont State Budget will give other students and families an opportunity like it gave me and my family. By funding the VSCS in the FY26 Vermont State Budget, you will be making an investment in both our youth and in our future. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much.
Next is Rosie Gray, and on deck is Connor Timmons.
We're just waiting for Rosie's on Zoom, so we're, I think you're welcome to sit.
Good afternoon. I'm Rosie Gray from East Callis, Vermont, and I'm an accredited financial and microbusiness counselor for Capstone Community Action. I'm here to ask for support of 1.65 million in base funding for our Vermont Community Action Partnership, our financial capabilities program, a $600,000 increase over the fiscal year '25 base funding for these programs. I'd like to share a story with you, an inspiring story about Kathy and Doug, two determined disabled Vermonters who face significant challenges in their path to homeownership. In 2022, I met Kathy and Doug, a couple living in an apartment building that was on the verge of being condemned. Despite their circumstances, they held on to their dream of achieving homeownership that would provide them with stability, security, and a place to truly call their own. Their journey was, however, nothing but easy. They faced credit challenges, had no established savings, encountered frustrating setbacks when three of their caseworkers left the USDA program. Kathy and Doug refused to give up. Over the course of nearly three years, they worked tirelessly to improve their financial standing and navigate the complexities of homeownership. With the right support and resources from our housing team, our VIT program, and our financial coaching program, they turned their dream into reality. Today, Doug and Kathy are proud owners in St. John's Bay, Vermont. Here's what Doug and Kathy had to say. Doug and I, with lots of help from the incredible people at Capstone, finally purchased our home. Rosie was instrumental in helping us increase our credit score and set up a stable account. She guided us through the home buying process by breaking it down into manageable, easy-to-follow steps. She helped us gather the necessary paperwork, set up a secured loan, paid off old debts, and improved our credit score to favorable numbers which ultimately qualified us for a USDA mortgage. We ask for your support as we know financial counseling is an essential service to those seeking to improve their financial literacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we're here, Connor Timmons, and then on deck is Grant John Gordon.
Good afternoon. I'm Connor Timmons. I'm the Executive Director of HomeShare Vermont. I'm seeking your support for a $235,000 base funding request to expand HomeShare Vermont's service area to include all three counties in the Northeast Kingdom, Southern Windsor County and Wyndham County. HomeShare Vermont is a matching and screening program that serves older Vermonters, Vermonters with disabilities, and really anyone who has extra space in their homes, hosts, we call them hosts, pairing them with folks looking for an affordable place to live. We'd call those folks guests. Guests provide some service in exchange for reduced rent in the form of household support like snow shoveling, transportation, or adjusting case presence. We run six background checks and three reference checks on all participants before they can even be considered for a match. Our expansion plan involves sharing case managers from local partner organizations rather than creating new full-time equivalent positions and setting up new offices across the state. This way, trusted local organizations will be able to expand the services they offer, while HomeShare Vermont will cover the training, hourly costs, and also ensure a baseline of quality that is up to the standard that Vermonters expect from us. We began testing this model in fiscal year '23 with the Thompson Senior Center in Woodstock, Vermont, and the lessons we've learned from that experience are already helping us set up our next expansion. Simply put, this growth model allows us to do a lot with a little bit of funding. We expect to confirm our service provision partners in the coming months, both in the Northeast Kingdom and in Southern Vermont, so we're ready to move as soon as we hear from the state. Expanding HomeShare services statewide has been suggested by lawmakers for years and has most recently been singled out as a strategy for supportive living in Vermont's Age Strong Plan. We are pleased to be ready to move closer to that goal in fiscal '26. For the past 42 years, HomeShare Vermont has been a national and indeed international leader in the home sharing movement, and that's something that Vermonters should be proud of. We are anxious to leverage our experience and expertise to help Vermonters wherever they are needed, and that certainly includes the Northeast Kingdom, Windsor County, and Wyndham County. Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to discussing the details of this plan with you in the coming days.
Thank you very much.
Next is Grant John Gordon. Is he in the room?
It's on Zoom.
I know, but it's not allowed to. Okay, we'll continue. We'll just.
Maybe they'll circle back to Grant John. Emmanuel Salmo-Hund, Salmo-Hun. And then on deck would be Brian Pravas.
Good afternoon. Thank you for listening to me today. My name is Emmanuel Sumayon. I am the Food and Nutrition Program Coordinator at Capstone Community Action in Berry, our food pantry stores in Laurel, Orange, and Washington Counties. I'm here today to ask you to please appropriate $5 million for the Vermont Food Bank for responsive readiness for food purchase and distribution and to support network capacity for the 220-plus network partners, food shelves, and meal sites across the state. During the last week of January, our pantry was empty, so was our walk-in cooler, and we ran out of frozen meat. It was difficult to see people leaving with just some canned food, knowing that their three squares Vermont benefits were all gone. I'm really concerned for our neighbors who work, are retired, and have disabilities. They are not able to sustain themselves because of lack of sufficient income. Like one man who came in last week who was injured at his work and awaiting surgery, or a retired woman who lives on just $1,200 in Social Security. They no longer can buy eggs or fruits and vegetables. They can afford even lower-cost proteins like chicken. The Vermont Food Bank helps Capstone have food to share with our neighbors. Without the Vermont Food Bank, we could not do this work and share these resources with people who need them. This is why I'm asking you to please appropriate $5 million for Vermont Food Bank for responsive readiness for food purchase and distribution and to support network capacity for our 220-plus network partners, food shelves, and meal sites across the state. I just want to add, yesterday, I had an 82-year-old woman who came, and I had to refuse to look to her because she already took two bottles. It was really sad. Thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you.
Next is Brian Kravitz.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Kravitz, a resident of Waterbury, and I am the Director of Outreach and Workforce Development at Central Vermont Adult Education, and I'm testifying on behalf of Vermont's Adult Education and Literacy Network. We request that you fully fund adult ed and literacy services according to the new funding calculation and statute. AEL funding is now based on a two-year student average, and for FY26, we're using the FY23 and '24 numbers, which is 2,003 students in average. This is also the final number being used in FY25. The agency event appears to have budgeted the same amount for AEL in FY26 as FY25 before the BAA, which is incorrect according to the funding calculation. We recently rectified this in the FY25 BAA. Further, the statute requires that the AEL per-student amount is based on 26% of the per-student base education amount for the fiscal year. In its FY26 calculation, the governor's recommended budget used the same cost for FY26 as it did for FY25. Although the BEA is actually lower for FY26 than FY25, it's imperative that we follow the statute. As per the statute, we request that the funding, that the AEL funding be based on 26% of base education amount of $12,668 multiplied by 2,003 students, equalling $6,597,241 and not the $6,296,888 that the governor's recommended budget. As our student numbers continue to grow, it's imperative that we receive the full funding so we can continue to do, provide literacy, workforce development, and college readiness to our most vulnerable Vermonters. Please fully fund adult ed and literacy and honor the legislative changes made in last year by funding $6,597,241. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joanna Dorian, and on deck is Michelle Faust.
Hello. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Joanna Dorian. I live in Winewski, and I'm the Local Food Access Director with NOFA Vermont, where I oversee the Crop Cash Plus and Farm Share programs. I'm here to ask you to please support $500,000 in base funding to strengthen Vermont farm viability and address food security by sustaining these proven programs, Crop Cash Plus and Farm Share. The Crop Cash and Farm Share programs provide financial assistance to low-income Vermonters to buy fresh food from their local farmers. We are grateful to have received $300,000 in one-time funding in FY25 for Crop Cash and Farm Share, which has allowed us to successfully maintain increased food security while directly supporting Vermont farmers. We need continued funding so that these proven programs can keep leveraging federal and philanthropic funds and continue supporting low-income Vermonters and farmers alike. In 2023, we were able to offer an expansion to Crop Cash called Crop Cash Plus, which gave money to low-income Vermonters to purchase meat, eggs, dairy, and other food at their farmers' markets beyond just the produce that Crop Cash supports. Farmers' markets saw significantly more and new SNAP customers come to their markets, and the usage of the Crop Cash and Crop Cash Plus program about tripled from the previous year. This expansion brought a huge economic boost for our local farmers, and by expanding beyond produce, we were able to support about double the farmers that could receive income through this program and provided an additional $200,000 in farmer revenue. In the wake of inflation, more frequent flooding, and the end of pandemic-era supports, it's vital that the state invests in these programs. So once again, please support $500,000 in base funding for NOFA Vermont's Crop Cash Plus and Farm Share programs to strengthen farm viability and address food security. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Michelle Faust. And on deck is Keryan Volker.
Hello, I'm Michelle Post, President of Irsberg and Executive Director of Northeast Kingdom Learning Services. I'm here to advocate for the state to adhere to the amendments to 16 VSA Sections 945, 4011 that were made during the 2024 legislative session to ensure full funding of the Adult Education and Secondary Credential Program that governs the state's Adult Education and Literacy Services. Based on what we have seen in the governor's proposed FY26 budget, it appears that the total number of AEL students used to inform the FY25 Budget Adjustment Act are not being used to calculate the total appropriation for FY26. Why does this matter? The impact of predictable funding for AEL cannot be overstated. In the previous legislative session, we were fortunate to receive approval for a funding formula that promised stability and predictability for AEL services. This funding has allowed our organization to do critical work, attract and retain qualified staff, restore benefits, invest in high-quality instruction, and create workforce development initiatives. The predictable funding model that was approved last year has been a game changer for the AEL programs across Vermont. It allows us to plan for the future with confidence, knowing that we can continue to provide high-quality services and adapt to the needs of our students and our communities. We are asking you to honor the changes made to the AEL funding in the previous legislative session and ensure that AEL programs are fully funded in FY26. The funding is not just a budgetary line item. It is a direct investment in the future of Vermont's workforce and the success of our adult learners. It's about continuing the vital work of building a stronger, more resilient workforce for Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is Keryan Volker on Zoom? Yep, okay, so we will skip...
I'm not in the room, I guess.
So Candace Gail is next, and on deck would be Lauren Weston.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Candace Gail. I'm the Director of Community Relations for Vermont Foundation of Recovery. I am here as a member of Recovery Partners of Vermont to advocate for funding necessary to sustain and expand Vermont-certified recovery residences. Recovery residents provide a home-like setting for individuals recovering from addiction by offering peer support, an environment built around social model principles, and assistance with support services and community resources. We are requesting a $660,000 increase in funding to ensure recovery residences remain operational and to support future expansion. Currently, our request includes $360,000 in general funds and $300,000 in opiate abatement funds, on top of the recommended $1.2 million in level funding. Additionally, we ask that you restore $325,000 in scholarship funding that is not included in the opiate abatement fund recommendations, but is essential for individuals entering recovery residences who may not have financial means to do so. Thanks to past legislative support, 40 additional beds were brought online in the past year, increasing access to recovery housing across the state. However, demand continues to rise. Without additional investment, we cannot sustain or expand these critical resources. Additionally, entry costs for a recovery home can be a major barrier. Restoring scholarship funding ensures that anyone committed to recovery has access to safe, supportive recovery housing, giving them the best chance for long-term success. I urge you to approve these funding requests to allow all Vermonters struggling with addiction the ability to recover and rebuild their lives. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Lauren Weston.
Glad you're good to come out today and weather.
It's been an adventure.
Glad you're safely here.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
And on deck would be, we're going to go back to Nicole's side.
Nobody else is back, too. So this is your last guest?
Wow, an honor. Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Weston. I'm the District Manager for the Franklin County Natural Resources Conservation District out of St. Albans, Vermont. You may have seen me and my colleagues in the card room today. It has also been an honor to hear the requests from others in the room and on Zoom today. Vermont is truly a lucky place to have so many caring and dedicated individuals and organizations. I'm here today to request support for a base budget of $3 million for the Vermont Natural Resources Conservation Council and the Agency of Agriculture's budget, up from the $500,000 currently in the governor's budget for fiscal year '26. I have been with the Franklin County Natural Resources Conservation District, one of the 15 organizations that are impacted by the Natural Resources Conservation Council's budget for the past four years, and I have seen the incredible impact that the work of the districts can do on the ground. Last year, myself and my very small staff of five employees worked with over 110 farmers on efforts directly related to clean water, nutrient management, and economic viability. I have had the honor of working with farmers during some of their toughest and most vulnerable times, wondering what the future of their farm will be, given the existing economic, climate, and public support conditions they are facing. The work that districts do deeply matters to our communities, and we need more support to keep ourselves afloat and functioning to serve our communities. As subdivisions of state government mandated under Vermont State Statute to serve our communities, we are asking you to please support a base budget of $3 million for the Vermont Natural Resources Conservation Council and the Agency of Agriculture's budget. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. So I think that's it, and that will conclude our public hearing for today. Thanks to all of you who participated, and as I said earlier, if anybody has written testimony, they're welcome to submit it to the House Appropriations Committee Assistant Eric Peppert. And otherwise, we'll be back here next, on the 28th of July.